One is shorter than the other.
Yeah, get that going. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the September nineteenth, twenty eighteen, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Donald Dyson. Start off with a pledge allegiance.
What allegiance is required in the United States of America? To be a public who stands one nation of our own, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Then I'm gonna start off and introduce the members. Myself, Robert Adams, Zach Karen, Greg Logan, Jason Quinn, and Tim Ryan. With that, I'm gonna step down. I'm the chairman, but I'm gonna step down on this next case that we're gonna hear. Case one oh six, oh oh six eighteen. Courtland Road, and hand it over to Greg Logan.
Chairman, thank you. Nicole, I got a couple of questions on this zero six dash eighteen dash zero.
Yes.
On the new business here. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Was the taxes paid for this property all up and forward this morning time?
No.
Well, I make a motion that they, um, we don't have this case. We don't do this on the law. The taxes aren't paid and you don't have the case. So I say we let them pull without prejudice. Let them keep their money. Once the taxes are paid, come back in front of us. Because I don't wanna make the precedents of starting something we don't follow.
Okay.
I've been on the board for five years. We've never allowed to have people come out in front of us and not allow them.
Okay.
Does anyone circumstance that if in that packet? I don't know who has the packet.
We all have the same packet.
So there's a contract, and on line seven, it says there's gonna be no improvement and no change of interest on that property until the settlement is paid, and it's not paid.
Okay. I'm just saying precedents that we've always followed.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not against this at all. I'm just stating to you at this, I'm speaking for myself. Just stating that in our, the way we usually do things, the taxes have to be paid for the projects to go forward. But that's always.
But I'm saying even if taxes were paid, it can't be done.
Excuse me, Vice Chairman. In reference to that, I believe that is a civil matter.
I'm just stating our policy that we've always followed. I'm not against what you're trying to do here. And I'm not speaking for the members of the other board. I just, as I was reading the packet, I'm like, it's gotta be a mistake here. Because this usually doesn't come in front of us.
It was allowed because Mary Hathaway.
Mary Hathaway?
Okayed it so that it could be presented to the board, even though the taxes have not been paid. On stipulation that she would, the town would get paid first.
Well, we have to pick, I don't know. I don't wanna speak for the other members. I don't know if, how the other members feel about what I stated on Marguerite. You guys can take it from there and see what you'd like to do.
In this case, do they apply voting members if we're not going to hear it?
Well, I don't wanna say that they can't. I don't wanna take this money that they paid for this case.
Right.
I want them to be able to go back, hold that money, or pull it without, whatever they wanna do, and come back and hear it after it's been paid. That's always been precedents that I was told right from the get-go, as well as the chairman here, the forty years that was here to sit here today. You know, I mean, he's the one who always stressed that stuff to us as well. But I'm only speaking for myself. As a member, I'd like, I'd like the others to speak, feel what they feel. And then maybe Marguerite can give us some invoice on what she bought. We should do on this matter.
I, I agree with you on that.
And I, I agree as well. Keep the precedents, precedents what it was before.
Just nervous if we do this, it's gonna happen next.
No, I'm completely agree with you.
No, absolutely.
I'm in agreement also on, I believe it also is right now at this point a civil matter. And a matter to be done with the town itself.
The point is, according to the agreement, the civil, in the civil matter, legally you can't, or they cannot put in for a variance or change in the zoning or improvement or any other interest until that's paid off. And then, I respect that you guys don't wanna get involved, but you guys, quite frankly, can't make a decision until that's taken care of.
That's what I'm saying. I'm a pretty common friend.
Right, that's exactly.
That's all, I just don't wanna make the precedents.
No, I understand. I don't want you two in the middle, but it just, it decides. I personally don't have a problem with it if everything's all square.
Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor for you to, um, take, go ahead and pull this, pull this out of the hearing, keep your money. Save it for when you are ready, come back in front of us and let us hear the case. Without having to pay.
Yeah, she's the one applying for it, but I'm just here.
Marguerite, you have anything you wanna say on this matter?
I'm a little confused. Are you the applicant?
No, I'm the applicant.
You're the applicant.
They hold a private mortgage, which, it's just a private mortgage.
Okay.
Sounds like there may be some pending issues going on that I don't have enough knowledge about.
I just saw that there was no taxes, outstanding taxes.
The town has adopted that. The end of the agreement, if you'll get number seven, it explains everything. Just read that and it'll tell you everything.
But it's civilly, it's not.
It doesn't matter.
So the town has adopted the provision that does require the taxes to be addressed before.
That's, I just don't wanna make some, I'm nervous about that.
Like I said, she would allow it. If I had the people who were okay. Town would get paid first. Yeah, they would, because they have, first time.
They haven't seen anything, anything for.
Right, and then we can actually look at the case, because it's nothing that we haven't done on the audit.
Exactly, yeah, I get it.
This is not what we, that's all.
No, it's that, it's the position of the board is that it doesn't want to address it further. And I'm not going to say that the board is incorrect to do that.
I just feel we're just starting something down the road. But we heard it here, case law this and that. I don't want that to happen. We followed that right from the get-go. Like I said, the, the case that they're actually presenting in front of us is nothing that we have never seen before. It's just the policies, it's not an order. That's all. So who wants to make the motion now?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll make a motion to table case number oh six dash eighteen until all taxes are paid on the property.
Yeah, and they still have their funds. They can keep the money.
Keep the money.
Yeah, we won't not lose, we won't lose your money to come back in front of us.
Well, so the only concern I have at that point in time is that you do have deadlines under the zoning laws that have to be met. So if at a certain point in time, this isn't resolved, you're going to need to take a vote denial unless the applicant withdraws. You can certainly allow her to withdraw and waive, waive future filing fees or something like that. But there's, there's timeframe that you as a board have to add or else it's gonna be deemed to be constructively planted. So usually, this doesn't get to the point of being here at this stage. It just gets turned away for filing from the beginning.
So you guys comfortable with that?
My suggestion would.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see the town.
He's actually opposing it.
Opposing it, so I don't wanna see the town.
It's okay.
I don't wanna see the town get put in a, this position where because she's had, there's a, there's a settlement that that land is involved with, where you get legally involved and I, and, and the town gets somehow a defendant in that.
Well, so you would like to withdraw without prejudice your cash until you resolve the taxes and come back and pay a new fee?
So that would need to be received in writing?
Yes, we're gonna have to have her sign something.
So either the clerk can write that up and she can sign it, or you could just, we could give you a piece of paper and you could write that you asked, you wish to withdraw this case without prejudice. Then the board can accept that. And then there can be a note added to the file. There could be a motion by the board made that if she were to return with a similar application, that you waive the filing fee. Or this is in the file.
Yep.
And that could be a way to at least have a rec, a record established for your own benefit too, because I don't know how long it'll take to resolve the taxes.
Would I also give a notification of that so that if it happens, I can confirm that?
So it would have to be a new filing and then you file it.
My point is, would they, would they, would they?
Yeah, your bodies would be notified.
Do you have a sheet of paper or?
Yes.
Is the motion, was there any second on the motion?
Yeah, we, I think we hold off on that.
Yeah, I'd say we hold off.
Actually, somebody can put that into the record.
Sure.
Uh, dated today, September nineteenth, twenty eighteen. We, Richard and Joellen Mullen hereby withdraw without prejudice for the variance, uh, withdraw our request for variance without prejudice. And it's signed both Richard and Joellen, uh, Joellen Mullen.
So you just need a motion to accept that?
So I'll make the motion that we accept this into the record for the file, case six eighteen.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What's that?
And then I suggest that you just make another motion to waive any refiling fee for this property.
I'll make a motion that we refe, waive the refiling fee for this motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, so just get those in order and come back and see what we can do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That went well. That went well.
Nice and easy, all right, excellent.
All right, next case, you're up.
I'm here.
Okay, we're gonna discuss and record the regulatory agreement. Do you have that all taken care of?
Well, sorta kinda, no.
Okay.
But half, I'll go through with you. Where I'm at with that is.
You can spare me. Do you, you have nothing to offer us of from the law?
Well, I have, I have a letter from the, um, from, from my, um, my, uh, what do you call it? My monitoring agent stating that she will assure that you get, that the town of Dyson gets credit for the additional three units through a filing that she'll make with the state that is in an ordinary course of her business. Aside from that, though, through, through my research, which is somewhat limited, but through Tony and through her, we don't see any other benefit through changing. All the other regulations should stay the same. So I'm just curious if, if, if she's assuring, speaking sort of to Marguerite, but if she's assuring the town that you'll get credit for the other three units, is there any reason to, to even modify the previous regulatory agreement? If that makes sense to you.
I think it goes to a title question. I mean, you guys won't be here forever. And so I think as people are looking at their titles down the road, it would be.
Oh, but that's all in the deed writers and stuff. The deed writer and stuff's all gonna be, be attached. Whatever, that's what Tony said. Whatever, whatever the requirements are from the, from the state, town, through the forty B process, that's all attached to their deed in, in the deed writer. So the individual houses are already, are encumbered correctly in any event, as far as I understand.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that. I think it's just a matter of a title agent, somebody looking through the record and not finding that and creating a problem.
Well, they'll find the original one.
Right, but that's not going to reflect the proper.
Number of units, which why would that matter?
It's also indicates as a condominium, doesn't it? I honestly have to go back and.
I do not remember, I do not know that.
I think it does. I, I didn't realize this was a question, or I would've tried to talk to Tony.
He does that, well, that's what Tony said. Tony said to me, because we were talking about the regulatory. And he said, look, Marguerite didn't bring it up. What's, we wasn't gonna really bring, I wasn't gonna like bring it up. Unless it got brought up, and it did.
No, so you brought it up.
No, it's first thing.
Yeah, we never asked you any other question other than that.
Correct, he, no, he just said about the regulatory agreement. And like Marguerite said, there was no, she didn't know, she said she didn't know it was coming up.
I didn't know, I meant, I didn't know that Tony was thinking it wasn't you did.
So this is not complete by.
Well, what happened was, I sorta took the ball and I, and I went and I, and I called my monitoring agent and I spoke to Joan Nany, who I had known for many years, who had worked on the project and everything else. And I had spoken to her, she's semi-retired, and she had said, well, you don't need it. There's no reason that, that you need it. So I went with that, with Tony. I said, Joan says we don't need it. Then I got, I was supposed to get a letter from her to that effect, okay? And basically, when I spoke to Gail, she said, well, I don't know about needing it or not, but there's no reason for it. Because I'm gonna assure that the, that the town gets the credit. And she didn't, no one knows why it would affect the title otherwise. I don't really care. If you need it, if you don't need it, I wish we wouldn't do it. But if you, you want it, I have no problem getting it. Tony has a draft.
Isn't it part of the agreement?
No, no, it was a, it was from, we did it, we did a regulatory agreement.
And needed a modification, so you don't want.
Then we modified the subdivision. And no one, I mean, I'm not sure that it says anywhere that if you modify your subdivision, you need to update your regulatory agreement. So I'm not sure there's a, there was just, it's just sort of something that Marguerite's looking at and saying, yeah, you should probably do it. I think that's where.
You drafted it, hadn't you?
He did, it, we don't know where, Tony didn't have any recollection of that, to be honest with you. But yeah, I don't, I don't mind filing it and running around with it. But it has to go with the selectmen, blah, 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 blah.
And here, and it, and it will have to come here too, the zoning board and the selectmen.
So it's all drafted, I'm just, you asked, I gave you my, what we think. And you can tell me what to do, I'll do it.
They'll undo it.
No, I mean, I had been requested by the board, so I don't, I haven't heard any, any, anything.
It's not complete till we have that.
Yeah, Tony has the draft, is what you're saying.
Well, yeah, he drafted it ten, five years ago. And it just never got, it never got executed.
All right, well, give them the money for the stamp. Let's move on.
Just get a straw for your comment.
And the next one's the groundwater discharge documents.
I have that in my email, I'll email it. I have the, I have a copy of the, from, of the original from Brian. I can get that to you, uh, through email.
So I have the original now. That was what I, one of the things.
You have the original?
That's what I sent.
We all have it.
The, no, 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 you sent the original from two thousand six.
The two thousand and eight groundwater discharge permit I found.
Right, but we, I thought you were asking for the two thousand fourteen one.
It can only be one original.
That would be.
The amendment, the original one I thought was all set.
That's what I found in my file and sent over to Tony.
Right, and when you were looking, my understanding was we were looking for the modification.
Right.
And I have that in my email, and I'll get that to you tomorrow.
And then the other piece is the question around condition nineteen.
Which is?
Which is about providing the financial, the documentation on the financial security provisions for the.
Okay, so right now, the forty-five thousand is probably sitting in a savings account with the association. What do you want me to have them give you?
So what I was.
Proof.
I can, that's easy, they'll give you a good.
No, because what.
You think like I do.
Because it's more.
Well, you can say it's sitting there anywhere.
There's more required, so it's, it's an element of, the forty-five thousand dollars was supposed to provide the board with a capital reserve account to address repairs and, and any changes that were needed to it. But then there was also a contribution that was supposed to be made so that they could replace the system, because the system has to be replaced within twenty years. And I don't know if that's been going on either. So there's some, take a look at the letter.
Well, my, my understanding of that was there was two, there were two requirements. And this is how I looked at it. There was a seventy-five hundred dollar a year requirement, I believe. There, that was, I don't think it was, I thought that was for maintenance. I thought that that was for like the annual maintenance of the system.
We really can't think, gotta know what.
Well, I know, but I'm, but I have a pretty good recollection, I think. And then, and then the forty-five thousand was security in case of a disaster. But I don't think the system's ever really designed and replaced. The system doesn't need to be, the system itself.
We had failure, I don't know about disaster.
Is, 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 I believe is supposed to last like forever.
No, so there was in the permit, the original permit, it talks about needing both the forty-five thousand dollars as well as a, um, so that was going to be your security.
Correct.
Repair and replacement. And then there was also a way of accumulating sufficient capital to replace the sewage treatment facility by twenty twenty-six, which is now starting to become a lot closer than it was back in two thousand and six.
Yeah, but there's no need to, whatever, okay.
Well, there is, and so then there was, there was documents that were drafted. So this was some of the other records I found in my files. It looks like later in two thousand and eight, as we were working on the Dyson Woods Trust, I was provided by Tony with the, with a trust agreement for the capital reserve account, as well as a draft escrow agreement. And it appears that those were going to be executed at some point in time, but not yet, because there was some holdup with DEP. They were requiring you to run a dry system, according to what Tony told me. And so there was some holdup in getting it executed.
We ran the dry, we ran the dry system in the beginning before the, before, before it was operational. We ran just the tanks.
So those documents needed to be signed and executed as part of compliance, both with the comprehensive permit and the discharge permit, and the policies that existed for financial security for these types of common subjects.
Right, right, right.
So I had, at the time, I found a letter that I sent to the board dated August seventh, two thousand and eight, where as part of approving the Dyson Woods Trust, because we were trying to move this forward, we, I suggested that they do so with a condition that these executed documents be provided to the town no later than March of two thousand and nine. And I don't know if that ever happened.
I doubt it.
I, okay. And then that the annual financial statements, which were still part of the, both the comprehensive permit condition and all of these other provisions, would continue to be provided to the town. And I don't think those were ever provided either. So that's the paperwork that we need to take care of getting resolved. And I don't mind that there's, can be ongoing work by the developer around this. I mean, frankly, to be perfectly fair to him, I'm going back through, you know, files and files, and they're ten years old. I don't even remember writing this letter.
I don't remember anything about this, to be honest with you.
So it's ongoing, so I think before issuance of the last occupancy permit, you wanna have this taken care of, but I, because as I find this in my file, I'm thinking we went further ahead with it than I had thought originally. So maybe it's just a matter now of putting those records together, getting the thing signed, making sure what happened.
The word's done.
But let's take a look back in two thousand and eight, see what happened. Maybe they actually did get signed, because it looks like DEP was requiring that too, and they were enforcing it. Spend some time researching it. My suggestion would be to just keep this as a running agenda item.
Okay.
If he has it to provide to you great, if he doesn't, you keep it going till the next time. And then at some point in time, I don't know where you are for getting your last occupancy permit.
Not near, I'm, I'm months away.
Okay, so you know that that need, this needs to all be taken care of before you get to that point.
Yep.
In time. That would be how I would suggest the board proceed on both this and the regulatory agreement piece.
Regulatory agreement should, because it should be simple. There's nothing really to that. This is a little bit more complex, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know we've each had a couple of months to look at this, but hopefully as we.
You did find a lot.
Right, and I found more than I remember too, so. And I'll, you know, Tony's welcome to, I'll send him this letter. He's welcome to give me a call. I did put together a pretty complete, um, letter to him, which I presented to the board, and I do think you might wanna read into the record, Mr. Chairman, just so there's a record of it. Because I think it should be part of the record where I put all of the paperwork I had back in May of two thousand and eight together. So we've got everything kind of more current.
Do you know which one it was?
It was this letter dated September eighteenth. And I think that's the one you probably received, Mr. Zoll.
Ninety-one for August twenty-eighth. Nicole, do you have it?
Yep.
This one here, right?
It's the top one.
Oh, top one's the top one. You want me to read the whole thing?
Well, I don't know where your, if your course is to read things into the record that you receive, and this would be that, otherwise you can't.
Two thousand and eighty, it's a lot.
Make it available for the public to look at. No, this is a, the letter I sent on.
Do we need to read it, or can we just have it submitted into the file? Have it.
It's, it's your call. It does have recommendations on how the board would proceed, so.
Want to start from the beginning?
No, just add it to the.
You wanna add it to the record?
Yeah.
Is that the board's doing? I'm not sure what part you want me to read, Marguerite.
Well, then I would just, again, I think you're gonna need to make a motion.
All right, so as you can, as you can also see the design approval requirements in condition ten, compliance with the terms of the permit in turn. The permit requires that a supplemental condition five one three on pages five and six of the permit, notification of any transfer of ownership of the permit. Is that what you want right into it?
We did that, right?
Well, it talks about the forty-five thousand, the security amount.
Didn't we look at that last time in the, didn't we see that in the?
It looks like it was transferred, but I don't think we ever saw the application for transfer. That's one of the pieces I am missing still. Looks like it went from the LLC, because that, I believe, is how it was originally issued into the trust. It appears it's now in the trust based on the documentation the building commissioner gave me.
Is that where, that's where it should be, right?
Yeah.
Interest-bearing escrow.
I get scared, because you're making a mistake with this document. The wrong person owns something, sometimes it's hard to get it back.
I mean, I do think that you were doing the paperwork you needed all along. And then it just, the notification started getting dropped.
The, Tony was pretty sure, just on one other update, on fifteen, number fifteen, the amendment, he's, he said he knows that all of them made it back here. So I, I know I can get them all here, except for fifteen. And the only other thought I had, and I left a message, is I think the last one person to touch them always is my bank. I think they, so I put a call to my banker to see if maybe he has it. But I usually scan it to him, I don't, I don't know.
Well, my thought is that it was signed, because they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have dispersed the forty-five thousand dollars. So if you got that money, then somewhere.
Right, so they have at least a copy of it. And then I can always just, just take the copy back down to the town clerk and have her make it a certified copy like she will the other one.
And then you could record that?
Yeah.
I don't know, I haven't been to the registry in a bit.
You can record sort of.
As long as that's.
Been there, done that.
Okay. We still need that.
All right, do you want to have the motion to submit this letter in there? It's part of the record. Fifteenth amendment. Any records of that too? Who's that with? On the fifteenth. Amendment fifteen that he has in there. She was just saying, the amounts that are owed, well, paid into an account, we have to have a signature from the banks saying under given to them to do that. We don't have that on record either.
Right, that's the one that I was just speaking, Mr. Zoll, about. So that was kind of separate from this letter that I set. So maybe you might wanna deal with the letter first and then we'll.
Would you agree with what you're talking, I mean, I saw one that had two signatures on one page and one signature on another.
This is the one we have. This is the fifteenth, the fifteen amendment.
Yeah, yeah.
With no signature.
Someone signed it at some point, they had it, well, I, I agree with Marguerite. God signed.
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't have got the, no.
Because otherwise they wouldn't have, yeah. Unless I had some other basis of something else to give them, showing it, they wouldn't have.
I don't have it. This one, okay.
Yep. That's one, it's a whole separate one, right there.
Where's you gonna do it?
Security, long-term security terms? Does that, is a good way to put it? As far as the, um, surety and completion?
We wanted to sign it.
And all that? Tony thought that there was a potential resolution?
I think the board would be willing to entertain something like that.
But the later approach to that is just to request a modification with language that I, that I want? Is that accurate?
Essentially, yeah.
And then, in order to find out what I want, I should be talking to Vying? Is that what...
Well, you'll need to talk to your engineer, and then Vying will review whatever the proposed amount, remaining amount is, to confirm they agree with it. You want to start with your engineer. And you'd need a modification of condition, I think it's condition 20.
My, uh, what I'm trying to resolve is the, the balance to be held after the fact.
It's condition, condition 21.
Correct? Is that, is that my only goal here?
It'll be part of the language of condition 21. So you'll want to take a look at it.
But what, but what the question is at this point, right now it says, right now it says one thing that I don't like.
Right.
So I want it to say something different.
Good.
And, but that's our only topic, is that, that I want to modify. There's nothing else that you're aware of through your conversations, that I should be requesting to make this work in one shot, is what I'm getting at.
I haven't heard of you needing to modify anything else.
It's not gonna be that easy.
I don't want to give the board something.
No, I know, I know.
It's not gonna be that easy.
But, so I guess there's a couple of things that I see going on here still. So you've got the open issue of the regulatory agreement amendment. Um, so you'd probably want to take a motion to continue to add that to the agenda for whatever future meeting he wants.
October 17th?
Well, it's up to the developer to tell you when. You have the groundwater discharge permit documentation, financial security documentation that's still open. Again, I, my suggestion is that you keep this as a running agenda item with him, to put it on for another date. You have the 15th amendment.
Recordings.
Recordings, and, and all of the other ones, too. I think it's 12 to 14.
He gave it a list, he gave it a list.
The performance guarantee, um, and the signature on the 15th amendment for that performance guarantee.
Definitely.
So that's a, a running agenda item. And then we have this ongoing conversation about whether or not the developer might want to submit a modification request, which is completely on his own to do.
Correct.
At any time.
I would do that for the 16th.
To address the, well, when you submit it, we'll address it at that point in time.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And that wouldn't be an agenda item, that would become an agenda item when you file the modification request.
Correct, I understand, yeah.
But that relates to, um, possibly decreasing the amount of money that's being held in security as the, the final contingency. Um, and so again, I've talked to the developer's attorney, and I've indicated to him I do think a, a modification is needed. But I did indicate to him that at least with one other development, you took a different form of security, and also reduced it slightly. You, you reached, that was, um, on the pines, you remember? You took a cash bond, and you got to an amount that, that the reviewing engineer felt was an appropriate amount for what was left to do.
We'll deal with that, we'll get to that.
If he gets to that. So my suggestion would be that first you'd make a motion to accept my letter from September 18th into the record, and then from there, you make a motion to continue the discussion of the regulatory agreement amendment, groundwater discharge documents, along with financial security, and the, um, performance guarantee documents to a future meeting, whatever he wants.
Is it a BS today? Same day?
Minus the transfer, minus the transfer permit, correct?
You want the...
Well, that relates to the groundwater discharge, to me, yeah.
So the same, the same four things, will we just continue to our next meeting?
Yep.
Unless you think you want more than one meeting to do this.
Well, I mean, I, like you said, let me get done what I, let me see if I can get something done. And as I get it done, we'll cross it off the list. We, we're all in the understanding, I'm not expected to deliver everything next month, but I would hope that in a month I can get, I should be able to record the damn things out of the, you know, like, just be able to do something.
Okay.
You know?
I had that moving off, to go now, you just...
So. The regulatory agreement, you need to be signed, voted on and signed at a meeting? The modified one, or just signed? I mean, if I just get that to you, can you, can it just be passed around?
It's been sent to the, to me to look at before. I'll have a record of my review. I just, I'd have to, again, I, I have to go back and look at my file on that.
Well, your review, I'm already more about the board, to be honest with you.
Well, and then I'll know the board.
If the board voted on it or whatever.
I mean, we'll be able to check records to minutes at that point in time to see if it was ever approved or not, so.
So it's already, but there'll be, there'll be new names, new people.
I'll be there.
Well, if it's just name changes, that's a different story than if it's, there's anything more that's changed.
Anything else from here?
So, um, I think the first motion was going to be to accept my letter of September 18th.
I'll make the motion to accept Marguerite's letter dated September 18th, 2018, Dyton Woods review of comprehensive permit condition 19 requirements.
Second.
Any, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And then the next would be to con, to move, um...
You want to do the...
All of the agenda items to a future meeting.
As they appear on this, on this list.
I'll make a motion to, um, move the following agenda items from this month to the next month's meeting. Um, the recorded regulatory agreement, groundwater discharge documents, transfer permit application between Dyton Homes and Dyton Woods, and performance guarantee record amendments. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're good.
Just one question, Marguerite. The transfer document between Dyton, Nicole and I had talked about this today, between Dyton Homes and Dyton Woods. What is that? Dyton Woods is the name of the subdivision. Dyton Homes is the name of my business.
Is this the groundwater discharge permit?
I think it's...
Between Dyton, so it's, it was Dyton Homes LLC to Dyton Woods Trust.
Okay, Dyton Woods Trust?
Yes.
All right, which is where it's supposed to be. So you just need a copy of...
The application.
Okay. Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now I got it.
Do we have any public input on this? No, I don't know, so.
That was that, right?
Yeah, you go.
Thank you.
I don't want to hear again until next month. Anyway. Okay. In this case, it's 0718, Pot Haver, Flood Overlake District. The petition's here. All right. Can you answer?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at One Church, with a attorney representing the petitioner. Uh, we're here before, uh, the board tonight requesting a special permit to allow the construction of a single family in a flood hazard overlife protection that you have in town. Uh, we came, got the special permit in July, in order to put the house there.
Tear it down.
Ray's rebuild. I neglected to ask for this other special permit that's required under your bylaw.
You had asked for it very soon, we said it wasn't necessary.
That's correct.
And now you're back here for the...
That's correct. So now this one, and I do have, uh, for Nicole, a time to extend for the board to act.
Both these decisions are going to be written together?
That, that's good, yeah. That, that works out well. So the extension applies to both.
Involved the board members last time were Greg, Jason, and Tim.
Okay, same ones.
Keeping the same ones?
So all of the, all the facts of the case, of course, stay the same, the building, everything we presented to the board before. I just omitted to, uh, ask for this special permit.
Is there any special requirements for that?
There are. Um, so it's under 4251 to 53 of the zoning bylaw? How about...
I do. I have, I have that here.
So...
4251?
So the first finding would need to be that the proposed use will comply in all respects with the provisions of the underlying district in which the land was located. And the second finding would need to be that all encroachments, including fill, new construction, substantial improvements to existing structures, and other developments, um, that there's a certification by a registered professional engineer, um, demonstrating that that encroachment will not result in an increase in flood levels during the occurrence of a 100-year flood. And then the last finding would be that, um, all the development would comply with the provisions of Mass General laws, chapter 131, section 40, and the requirements of the state building code. Which I think when the board has considered this in the past, they've gotten some type of a letter from the building commissioner on that. I don't know if that's part of the board's record.
The order of conditions for ConCon has issued. Of course, the state building code will have to adhere to the building permit processes of design.
They refer to it as an ASBIL?
Isn't it? That's correct. And we know it's an elevated structure, it's above, so it meets with the requirements on the, uh, the flood overlay district. So I think, you know, in the course of pulling the building permit and the ASBILs on the Septic and Conservation Commission, we'll comply with those requirements.
Good part of the permit.
That's correct, yeah. So those, those are, those are conditions of the special permit I find.
What about one related to the certified engineer, showing that they won't result in an increase in flood levels? Do you have anything from your engineer on that?
Well, we just, we have, the plans that were submitted, I believe, were stamped plans, and it's an elevated structure. So there's no building, I think it's, uh, 12 feet, uh, from the ground level to the first floor. So, you know, we're, we're eliminating an existing structure.
It's there now.
Correct. So the new house is going to be, the first floor is going to be 12 feet above?
Yeah, I, I may stand corrected, whether it's 10 or 12, but it's elevated to...
The highest level.
Comply with the velocity zone that it's in, under all the...
100, 100 years tall, that's correct.
Um, do you think if, if the board were to create a condition that required this to be, this certification to be provided prior to issuance of a building permit, that would be a problem?
It's fine, yeah. That's usually part of it, as we, we've done in the past.
You've actually had it as part of your record in the case that I looked at in the past, but I think it could be conditioned?
Well, let's put it, let's condition it.
Before a building permit?
For 4252, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've done it in the past. I have a question.
And, I mean, if you want to be consistent with what you've done in the past, I would probably suggest that as part of 4253, you ask that the building commissioner, um, send a letter to the zoning board confirming compliance with the state building code prior to issuance of a building permit. He's not here tonight, otherwise I'm sure we could have gotten his testimony, but otherwise I think we could just do it as a pre-building permit condition.
That was my question. Is that what your question? Make it part of the, the condition.
Nothing else has changed since, uh, the last time you read it?
The vaccine plans, that's correct. I mean, by, actually by taking the structure off the ground and putting it up, you actually will create less flood, you create more flood hazard by taking a house off the ground. So, condition with the, with the professional engineer won't be an issue.
They don't build them like they used to?
No.
It's a good thing, too.
So you're going to build it to the specs of this one? This one says 15 feet above.
Yeah, whatever the plan is.
Whatever this plan, this is the plan we submitted.
That's correct.
What do you see at 15 feet, Greg?
Back. Back, uh, lower right.
Forward.
Oh, there it is, gotcha.
Right about...
Yep. So it's got your garage slab, and then raised podium structure above that.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I have no more questions or comments at this time.
Is there any others present? Would you like to be heard?
No.
More than a statey name?
Leah Harald 2651 plus...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, ma'am.
Leah.
Okay.
I support.
You're, you're not opposed.
In favor.
You're in favor, okay.
Okay.
Chairman, I have no questions at this time.
Who's the third member?
Go ahead. I'm good.
Okay, you're good. Okay. All right, so I guess I would, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, um, to accept the, uh, special permit on the condition of, uh, items 4252 and 4253. Uh, those, uh, those items being met, or those requests being met prior to issue of the, uh, special permit.
I'll second.
Do you need a letter from the, uh, building permit?
Yeah.
May I ask a question? Was it prior to issuance of the special permit or prior to issuance of the building?
You said special.
Oh, sorry, building permits, my apologies, my apologies.
I'd be scrambling.
That's my fault.
I understand.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
This is where you wanted to take a break?
Oh, thank you.
Nicole?
Oh, thank you.
Is this where you want to take a break?
Yes.
All right, we're going to take a break for a few minutes. She needs to, uh, photocopy, copy some papers. I'm going to shut that down. I'm not sure.
Why is it just the permit?
Thanks, thanks, sorry, I didn't see that.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, John.
This was the exact same, but, uh, the date of the permit, nothing's changed on that.
It's going.
It increased, it means all the...
This place is more water.
Okay, I'll bring this back. We're recording right now. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're back from the break. Okay. All right, do you want to deal with these people now?
Well, that's a nice introduction.
You're not, you're not on, you're not on this agenda.
We were, we were called to land.
Yes, yes, but you're not on the agenda, that's why I wanted to know if you wanted to go through it. I didn't know what else to refer you to, I, I mean, did...
Public input.
Public input.
Public input.
I'm sorry?
If we could, that would be great.
Okay. What can we do for you?
Um, well, we're from Stonegate Landing. We received this bill, August 18th, back billing us for a homeowners association that doesn't exist from the builder.
Okay.
Threatening us with liens on our houses if we didn't pay immediately.
Okay. As the zoning board, okay, we cannot deal with this, okay? But as the homeowners association, okay, you say it doesn't exist. Let me finish, okay? The building contractor has the right to become the homeowners association until such time as you people get together and develop your own homeowners association, which I believe your first meeting is going to be in October.
It wasn't supposed to be until the subdivision was finished.
No, no. He sent you a notice and a letter that says October. I read the letter.
I didn't get that.
Okay, well, that's what's gonna take place, okay? You have a right to go there, and you people have the right to appoint your own president, vice president, secretary, and whatever, okay? That way, any money that is being paid to the homeowners association will be paid to your homeowners association. But that man, as a part of the condition of the forty-B project, homeowners association agreement, has the right to do that, okay? Now, as the board, we cannot get involved in this because this is something you people entered into when you signed your deeds or your mortgage agreement. Let me finish, okay? Because it's there. And if you don't think it's there, you need to contact the people that did your mortgage, because the bank certainly knows what it cost you for your mortgage. And the homeowners association is part of a forty-B project. It is, ma'am. And anyway, we can't get involved in this because it's a civil matter, okay? I can only tell you that the best thing for you people to do is seek your own attorneys or contact the attorney general, alright? And if you don't, it's part of your contract that is a basic amount, was it twenty-five dollars per month?
Twenty dollars a month.
Huh?
He said twenty.
Okay, but I believe I read it was twenty-five.
Comes out at two-forty a year.
Two-forty a year.
Twenty bucks.
Twelve times twelve is two-four, twenty-four, two-hundred-and-forty dollars a month.
He wants it retroactive. There is no way. No way.
Well, let me try to explain this to you, ma'am. I really can't. As a board member, the zoning board only has authority over zoning, alright? This is not a board that can tell this man to stop what he's doing or do anything else. You have to do that on your own if you feel as though you're aggrieved by this agreement. Now, there has been passed stuff that has been done, that he has done, whether he's entitled to it or not. I can't make that determination, but I know the snowplows and it's been stuff done. If you, you should be keeping the money in escrow, so in case you should have to pay it, okay? Now, if you go back, go back to your mortgage person, okay? There had to be an attorney that signed your mortgage. You look over your mortgage, I'm sure the homeowners association agreement amount is there. It's part of the
No, this is what happened. G E R Corporation started with us, okay? The Tardanico's, and I'm sure you know who they are.
What?
G E R Corporation, they built our homes.
Right.
It was gonna be a fifty-five homes.
Right.
Okay.
Two years later.
Ivan and I have the only house that's supposed to be a condo. We're not wall-to-wall. We've got a little wall that makes a breezeway. It was supposed to be dotted. This, our homes, the kind of homes that we have, were supposed to be dotted around the neighborhood. And then regular homes were built around that. We all have garages. We're very fortunate about that. Now
But what does that have to do with your
I'm just saying. So, what it has to do is, the Tardanico's, G E R Corporation promised us we were gonna have beautiful roads and nice sidewalks. That never happened.
It has, the project's not complete, is it?
Well, then don't ask for retroactive. You're not gonna get retroactive until the darn project's complete. Now, now, now he's gonna auction off the land. When is Dayton going to start recognizing, we're paying taxes too? When are you gonna recognize that this jerk, oh yeah, he has to, he has to snowplow the roads, we've gotta go to work? When is Dayton gonna snowplow the roads? When is Dayton going to recognize that we are here paying you taxes? He's not gonna complete it, because he is so broke that he is trying to squeeze us for money from the past. And another neighborhood that he owns.
I think the, I'll just speak for myself. I believe that the chairman is hitting his friend nail on the head is that it is a civil matter.
Let me try to explain it one more time.
So, we gotta go to court.
Listen to me. The town cannot even go in at its private property, okay? That road belongs to the developer. We can't, the town, like you say, when is the town gonna do this? The town has no authority. You wouldn't want the town, in fact, if you can get the town to do this, send it to my house, I want it to plow my driveway.
How come they pick up the trash?
How come they pick up the trash? I'm sure he must be paying for it.
That's the town, isn't it, picking up the trash?
Yeah, but I'm sure that that's part of the homeowners association agreement.
We don't ever have a homeowners association.
We've never seen the agreement.
We haven't paid a dime out to the homeowners association.
It's never been established, sir.
Everything went downhill.
But that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that for the time the time you lived there
We've been here eleven years.
Alright, so you owe him eleven years' taxes. Eleven years' homeowners.
He's retroactive till two thousand nine.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Two thousand, over two thousand dollars.
He's just broke and needs some money. He didn't pay his, he didn't pay his electrician, and he didn't pay Ray's appliances.
You need a lawyer.
Because I went and bought a new dishwasher, and I said, nine-forty-two Stonegate Landing, do you know where that is? And Ray, from the plane, he said, oh yeah, I know where that is. He said, Federoff owes me eleven thousand dollars. And what's he doing now? He's going to auction off what? What is this? He's gonna auction off October tenth? On the premises.
So, that would make this null and void.
He's getting out. He's so, he's so broke and so down.
Court agreement, he can't. I'm gonna say it one more time. You need an attorney, okay? Because I can't help you. I wish there was something I could do. We all do. But we have no authority over this man.
What about the town?
And let me finish, okay? Because that's a forty-B project, okay? When you bought into that place, you bought into a forty-B project. It is there in perpetuity for life. It cannot be auctioned off separately to anybody. Whatever conditions are issued under the forty-B falls under the continued ownership as it goes on further, okay?
Okay, so what's the auction thing? It's, we've got a Facebook.
It's probably somebody's house that didn't get paid. I don't know what it is.
No, it's the whole subdivision, October tenth, they're having an auction. You wanna read it?
Where is it? Do you have it? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't mean he's gonna sell it, ma'am.
It doesn't mean he's gonna sell it, but it means he's freaking desperate.
Well, I don't know.
He's freaking desperate. Come on.
But he can't sell it legally. He can't.
He can't sell it.
Well, he's gonna try.
He's not gonna go.
There you go.
I didn't say he was a nice guy, ma'am.
No, I know. But he's not getting retroactive anything.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, would you like to read that into the record?
What's that?
Yes.
What you're about to look at right now. I don't know. This is, we're not, we can't hear this.
We're not hearing anything.
I'm just giving them the time. If he's trying to sell something, he's breaking the agreement of the law.
We should at least have it read.
So, we should understand.
Worst comes to worst, we should at least have it read.
Doesn't the town come into that if he
On that part. I don't think we should. I really don't.
No, yeah, but he's got a contract.
Anybody can post anything.
He's trying to contract with you people.
Huh?
He's got a contract with the town.
Yeah, he can't sell it, ma'am.
Well, he's gonna try on the tenth of October month.
This has nothing to do with me, on the board.
They invited us to come down because the town council was here, the town lawyer.
And it's gonna, it's gonna dig?
We gave you an answer that I contacted the town lawyer myself, and she cannot give you any advice because she is the town's attorney. You need to get your own attorney. I've been trying to tell you that. We can't help you in this matter.
So, why are we here?
I don't know.
We were asked to come.
We were asked to come.
We were invited.
And Nicole sent us an email.
We sent you notices last week that we could not do anything about this. This is a It's a civil matter. We have no civil authority over that. I sympathize with you, ma'am, but we have no authority over civil law. We can only deal with zoning law.
So, what's gonna happen? Okay, I understand, but, you know, we have to, we have to
If we don't pay, you're gonna put a lien on our property.
You need a lawyer.
We need a lawyer, yeah.
I've got a great lawyer. Do you guys wanna keep my lawyer?
Any lawyer. I don't know, but
You might wanna call the attorney general.
Yeah, let's go to them.
And let them advise you. I can't advise you on what to do. But I do know that that homeowners association thing, he has the ability to be the homeowners association until such time as you people get together and you get your own homeowners association, vote your own people in, which wouldn't take long, and then you would be responsible for that kind of stuff. And I don't know what his actions will be, but you really need to seek out an attorney, because if you don't, if you're aggrieved in this matter, then you should pursue it.
Yes, I do.
May I ask the zoning board, what can the zoning board do about this upcoming auction?
Nothing.
Nothing.
So, you're gonna let him sell it?
I have no authority over whether he sells or not.
Doesn't the zoning board have something to do?
He can't sell something that's in perpetuity. Whoever it's buyer beware.
So, if he does
I could sell you the Brooklyn Bridge. You wanna buy it? I got some acreage in Arizona.
Sold it several times myself.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, sir? This is saber rattling. I don't know what he's doing.
Well, he doesn't
Do you understand what I just said to you? Anybody can make a thing, but that isn't, that, am I right? Stonegate Landing, he's a former chairman, and he's been for forty years.
Yes.
Stonegate Landing, that property's forty-B. It's gonna stay forty-B until it's changed, in perpetuity. He can't sell off part of that place or sell
It's gonna be auctioned off either individually lots or as one
With the understanding it has to be still forty-B. So, if he does sell it, it still stays Stonegate Landing forty-B projects. Another developer could come in and take it over and continue his project, but that project can't be, it's still gonna go
Well, he's not selling it. The bank's selling it.
The bank maybe sells. I don't know who's selling it, but that project can't go away.
The way it's advertised on the
Facebook?
Yeah, on the advertisement is, he is listing several sites that has not been built on.
Right, because that's Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. That's all part of the forty-B project. It was, what is it, seventy-eight units? It's all titled as a forty-B deal. Yes, it is. It's all forty-B. What he does, it's still titled forty-B. They're buying, like you're buying If you sold your home, he could sell it to whoever he wants, but they have to assume the, whatever conditions on the Like you said, it was supposed to have nice roads and stuff that's never been finished. The town has to accept the roads. As it is right now, the town goes in there and plows it, and they charge him for plowing, because that's private property, ma'am. I don't even like the town going in there, because if one of our townspeople get hurt, the liability and stuff is on the town, but we're going in there because you people are taxpayers as well. But as a board, we really can't do much for you.
Can the town remove the curb on one-thirty-eighth that we've been driving?
You go in like this.
Ten years.
Well, I don't know. Are you going in the right way or the wrong way?
We're going in the right way.
It's a one-way.
Yeah.
It's a one-way, so I don't know which side you're talking about.
One-thirty-eighth, right here.
You take, you take a From Stonegate Landing from one-thirty-eighth.
Yep.
It is terrible.
We've been driving over curb for ten years.
I certainly could talk to Mr. Federoff about doing something about that.
Very good.
I already talked to Mr. Pires last year about it, and nothing got done.
And then another thing is, finally, something got done, because her children were going to the bus stop, and there was this big puddle, because again, the roads aren't done, and the kids were coming home up to their mid-calf.
Having fun with it, huh?
Yeah, well, the town can buy the shoes.
Getting back to that curb cut, the town
They fixed that, so that's
The curb cut is only allowed a certain amount, am I right? Because that's the state highway. They can only cut the curb a certain amount because the state owns that road, so
So, they shouldn't put a street in if they're not gonna take the curb out?
It's a one-way.
Yeah, it's a one-way.
You still pass it.
But they allowed him to have that. It's part of
Well, we'll look into it.
It's a one-way in.
Look into it. Yeah, I know that, but they're only allowed to do so much. Is it twenty feet or whatever the state allows? And it's a six-month waiting period just to even be heard by the state to allow for a curb cut.
Call Federoff before.
We can try to talk to Mr. Federoff.
Oh, yeah.
How good do you think we're gonna do that? But it might even be to your benefit if Mr. Federoff sold that to another developer.
And then he'd be in trouble, wouldn't he? If he's leaving town, I mean, where's that money gonna go?
Well, he might feel as though you owe it to him, ma'am.
Well, he
Because I'm sure if you go back and look, there's a homeowners association agreement and a bank know about
It's not signed.
We don't owe him anything.
What do you mean it's not signed?
I have a piece of paper that's not signed that says a homeowners association will be formed after the subdivision is complete.
Well, he is the homeowners association up until that point.
But it's not complete.
No, but until someone takes it over. He is the homeowners association. You people have to make up your own. Am I right on that?
Yeah, but in this letter, he's made himself chief cook and bottom washer.
That's right. He has that right.
That's correct.
He has that right.
So, he's gonna take our money and screw with it.
Nine years after we've been, we've been here eleven years, and we
But didn't the snow plowed for eleven years, and didn't they do whatever they do?
First three years on the deal, we had to call
Why didn't he come after money?
Yeah, we're gonna have to move on with this. I wish I could help you. If that's what you need to do, get an attorney.
Okay.
Because this is a civil matter. We have no authority over it.
Thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it.
We got
We are gonna check on the curb. We are gonna check on
We will check on that curving for you. I mean, that's something we can do on that. But if you're afraid that he's gonna sell it and go away, that project's still, they're buying the project.
Right.
Okay? And they might, you might be a lot better off, because if you go up and look at the other developments here in town, there are other developments.
They're nice?
They're nice.
Ours are very nice, our homes and our land, and we love our homes. But we're not, it's not up to us to tar the streets. And since two thousand seven, my driveway and everybody else's driveway, we've got cracks and grass growing through it.
They've fallen apart. I mean, he wasn't responsible for our driveways.
Nope, Tardanico, G E R.
Yeah, he came in after.
I've been trying to call Jeff Tardanico.
He is responsible for our driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, he bought the project. He's responsible for, if the driveways were supposed to be finished, which I think they were.
If he wants twenty-five hundred dollars from me, he could put my driveway in.
Oh, he's not gonna get it, whether he puts my driveway in or not.
Thank you very much.
Sorry that I'm so feisty and a little angry. You have to stand up for yourself, you know?
But you gotta get the right guy. Get a lawyer.
The lawyer. I'm kinda surprised and unhappy about that, but, I mean, I've got a great lawyer, who's a real estate lawyer, and if these people
Frenchie?
Oh, God, yeah. See, I'm leaving my millions.
We can't do it because it's civil law. Yeah. We only deal
Well, he's a J E R K, money-hungry glutton, that thought he was gonna be a millionaire on the backs of other people. It ain't happening. No, 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 but thank you, everyone.
It's still the best place in town to live in, Dayton.
Love Dayton, love Dayton.
Okay, we got all business today here.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to take care of this, ma'am? You look like you're in a hurry.
I'm not in such a hurry, you know? Mr. Chairman, my name is Valerio. Come sit up front.
Okay, you're the guy from two-hundred Williams.
Yes, exactly. I'm an attorney for One Connection. They wanna cite the cannabis facility at two-hundred Williams. And sorry, I was with the planning board earlier. I
Let me ask you a question. Doesn't it run from two-hundred, from the Totten Line to two-hundred Williams Street, our district now?
Yeah, but there's a setback requirement for residential, and we, and because of the way it is, we don't meet the setback, even though the planning board absolutely contemplated that two-hundred Williams address. And so, we don't meet the setback requirement.
What is the setback?
A hundred feet.
Yeah, but what are you gonna have? What are you asking?
The building's not a hundred feet.
So, the building's
How far is it?
Somewhere, somewhere in between. I don't know, we've got the exact number, but yeah.
Somewhere in between.
It's probably, it's somewhere around fifty feet.
So, what is your question? You wanna know if we can hear this?
So, when I first met with your zoning enforcement officer, it was unclear as to whether you would be the relief that we would seek, and then actually, town council said that you are. And so, the planning board told me, hey, you might as well make an informal appearance in front of the zoning board and just chat with them about your issue.
Because I thought the permitting authority on that was gonna go through the planning board.
That's, so that's a special permit.
But now you're asking for a variance, not a special permit.
We need zoning relief. We need a variance based on the setback requirement from residential.
I'm sure we probably can hear this. I can't tell you how it's gonna go.
Of course not, of course not. I just want, you know, if, I know I've met with Mr. Ryan's in the past, and if there was, we were just out informally, you know, around Town Hall, because I've been back and forth a bunch for this project, and it was suggested that I come and speak with you informally before doing all the
Get all of your information, like how far from the setback the dwelling's gonna be, and how far away the next house is, because is there any open space between that and house?
I don't know.
Okay, of course, you know the abutters would all have to be notified as well.
Of course. Abutters and abutters to abutters, and then to interfere will satisfy all that. We'll make sure to put together a quality package, but I just wanted I really, I wanted to gauge whether the board was gonna be receptive to hearing this at all, or whether we were just, you know, spinning our wheels.
Well, if you're coming in asking, it's gonna be fifteen feet, I don't think that's gonna go well.
I think it's further than that. I think it's close.
It's almost thirty-five.
I believe it's twenty feet from what I saw on the plan.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
Yeah, so you know
Paul Pacchico's building?
Correct.
Yeah, I know.
So, what are we talking about? Paul Pacchico? Paul Pacchico, is that the guy that's got the trucks and stuff?
Yeah, but that's not the place.
Oh, okay. He owns a piece of property.
This is further south.
No, that is not.
The original location. No, no, no.
Our district is in the Totten Line on the west side of Williams Street to two
Two-hundred Williams is where we're talking about.
Right. So, Paul apparently owns some land up there? I don't know. I don't know.
His sister does.
I don't know all the parameters behind that, but I did look at a plan that I saw today, but within twenty feet.
Beyond just noticing abutters and abutters to abutters, go knock on the guy's door and see if I can schedule a meeting and talk to him about what our proposed use is and whatnot.
We can hear that, but whether it's gonna fly or not
Of course, I don't expect an advance commitment that you're gonna approve the variance.
If who owns it, so I don't think we should even be discussing that at this point.
I mean, if they come in and they support our request for zoning relief, that couldn't hurt, but you know
They have to be notified.
Yeah. I meant the owner too would sign off on our application. So, if it's that simple, and that's all we need to talk about, I'm good with that.
Can I ask a question of the applicant, possible applicant? Do you have a host community agreement signed with the town of Dayton?
Yes, when Ms. Aronstein and I put together a host community agreement, she got the max possible.
Was assigned by the board of selectmen, enacted upon by the board of selectmen?
No, we deferred that.
There is no host community agreement in order, sir. There is not.
No, not executed, not executed. Negotiated.
Negotiated, but it has to be executed. It needs to be executed in order for you, or whoever is your, who you're representing, needs to go out and be the applicant to the state.
The cannabis control commission, that's correct.
So
And you have to have site control.
So, the problem is, the problem with getting the host community agreement is, we don't know, right now, we have an agreement on one-hundred Williams, which is, we have to build, and one-hundred Williams isn't as attractive to us. Two-hundred Williams is already ready to go. The nature of the building, the shell is already like this insulated building. It works very well for us. The owner wants us to be in there. The town seems to like it. It was certainly contemplated when the zoning bylaw was done.
You're gonna need a purchase and sale. You're gonna need to have site control.
Yeah, we're gonna have site control. We have that, we have, absolutely, but so we can't, so the reason I've asked Ms. Aronstein to defer the host community agreement matter with the board of selectmen was because we don't know what address we're gonna be in. If our variance gets denied at two-hundred Williams, then we're gonna be at one-hundred, and that's what the subject of the host community agreement will be. But the terms of it have all been negotiated. And it's gone to town council for their review and everything else. We just don't know what address we're in right now.
No, in the question that you had, Tim, I'm not sure that that has any effect on whether we can make a grant or deny a variance.
Why would, I just wanted to put this out there. How would the board be able to act on a variance if you don't have some type of an agreement, which is mandatory with the state in order for him or this petitioners to go forward with the applicant?
Right, I agree with
So, we're gonna go out and zone an area that we don't know if the applicant is gonna be approved in order to move into that zone.
The area is already zoned. We've already passed the area.
He's looking for a variance for another location.
I don't think
So, let me just say this, so in other words, yeah, so in other words, the, when the
It doesn't have
It should have never really been given a solid address. Should have basically said that this town of Dayton, Town Line Two, the corner of Williams Street.
Well, no, they did two-thousand, right?
There wasn't given a solid address. It doesn't say two-hundred Williams Street in the zoning bylaw, but it's in the overlay, but then it violates the setback.
I remember them having a specific number at the hearing.
They definitely contemplated this
No, when we voted on it, they said from the Totten, from the Totten Line to, I don't know whether it was two-thousand or two-hundred, but there was a specific number there. but there was a specific number there.
There's an overlay that you can see on the zoning map now, and the problem, and this property is in that overlay, so whatever they did to create that overlay, that's what was voted on.
The building is already existing?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why I wanna be in there, because we can get open quick, we can start working.
It just doesn't need the setback of the hundred feet.
Back to what you said, Tim, that really hasn't any effect on our, whether, we're here in zoning here.
Yeah, Mr. Ryan, our process applying with the state, you know, we need to get, we need to know that we have...
You need to get this done first.
Before we go to the head of control.
I just wanna make sure that we're...
Yes, and I'm happy to talk to you about this as much as you want to, because unfortunately I already think about my...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, twenty-nine eighteen, if you just wanted to take a look at that, it just explains what you were just talking about with the, where the district is.
Twenty-nine eighteen, marijuana overlay district. Included, it said, overlay district. Beginning of the parcel identified as lot one twenty-seven in Mrs. Sessom's map, and ending at the town line. Okay, so the assessor's map would be, is that lot, is that two thousand, two hundred, one twenty-seven?
Correct.
Huh?
Correct.
Okay, so that, when we were voting on it, they did say two hundred to the town line. Right, so that's lot twenty, one twenty-seven, the assessor's map, and ending at the town line.
It specifically contemplated, they meant for us to be able to cite this business in that building, but unfortunately, when the language got voted on, we, it sort of ran afoul of the setback, you know, but it was absolutely...
Get your application in and get it done and go forward.
Okay.
Because we can't hear, I don't know how it's gonna go.
No, I don't know, of course not, but I know that this, this building was supposed to be, you know, one of these, the place one of these was cited. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
Take care.
Okay, now we gotta do, oh, we, special permit, we did that. Okay, it says, review and discuss five-year goals for the zoning board of appeals. My first one is, I want it to be made simpler to apply to the zoning board of appeals.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do you mean as a member of the zoning board, or to appeal for a special permit or a variance?
No, no, it's, you, they, you're asking, and I really would like to have that poll removed from my office in five years. But I mean, you, this is a goal. It's very difficult.
To apply for, to apply for...
A variance.
A variance.
I mean, for builders and stuff like that, they deal with it all the time, but the average person that comes before us, like this man here tonight is a different business and stuff, but most people are coming in, they wanna know if they can build a garage or...
Get a split lot or whatever, maybe.
It shouldn't be that hard for...
Do you feel like we sort of rectified that with the new permit that we voted in?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I've gone to different towns.
It's like four pages long now, right?
I've gone to different towns.
It used to be, it used to be one.
This is one of the easiest ones that we've gone to.
For a variance?
Yes.
It may be longer, but I think it's more clear.
Do you apply for variances in...
Yeah, I have applied for variances and gone to all the...
I thought it had to be the people that...
No, I can represent and do the stuff with the permanent.
And I, I can agree with Greg too, and I've gone through and applied for variance.
All right, so anybody else got any suggestions?
I'm not saying that this is, no variance is easy.
Get another member. Greg, you took my, you took my ideas. I mean, I'm not kidding, but I am kidding at the same time.
No, we have, there's been someone that I don't wanna discuss it, because...
No, that's fine.
Through the beginning stages of the interview process.
Yes, they are. They, I don't know, that's a question, has it been posted? I asked you that yesterday. It has been posted.
It has been posted by the selectmen.
Okay.
They discussed it at one of their meetings.
Okay, because that needs to be done.
Yeah, and we have received, I believe, two applicants.
Okay.
One is more forthcoming than the other. The other one, I'm not quite sure if she followed up, so...
But that's good.
Get them together, and how long did they have to post it?
I believe they posted at, two or three meetings ago, when we...
Okay, so it's gone past the fifteen days or whatever, okay? Get the people together, set up a date, and I'll do an interview if any wanna sit on an interview.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody doing, it's gonna be doing the day.
If I'm around, I would like, I would mind being involved, sure.
Okay.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, we'll do it. And what else we got here? Now, this is a question that's come up, and review and discuss and charge for a butters fee, twenty-five dollars. I don't know how this came about, but when they're doing the butters list over there, when the planning board or other people come in and get in the butters list, the tax, tax officer, whatever, how do you say it? Who is it?
Collector?
The assessor.
The assessors, okay, the assessors are, they assess twenty-five dollar charge. We charge a seven-hundred-and-fifty dollar fee for application, am I right? And they wanna know if we wanna charge twenty-five dollars of that more to their butters fee, or take the twenty-five out of the two-hundred-and-seventy-five that we have. Am I right on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's a little clarification I'd like to add.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I was digging through some of our previous records, and apparently at some point, we would take in an application, but it would be up to the applicant to go to the assessors, to build the butters list.
And pay for it.
Yes, and pay for it with them for twenty-five dollars.
That's what they should do now.
Okay, since I've started, I will get the application, and they will pay the seven-hundred-and-fifty, and I will be the one who sets up the butters list. I will set up the notification and the...
Why don't you just let them do it like they have been in the past?
It's up to the board, if you'd like to go back to that.
Does one benefit over the other?
Yeah, well, no, she's taken it upon herself to do this. She's very thorough, this girl. She works hard. No, she does.
To put up, to put up with you, yeah.
So, well, the assessors have come back and said, Tim, before you came, we used to get twenty-five dollars for doing that. Not a joy here. We're not getting the money anymore, so you need to let them do it.
Okay, okay.
And that's not almost up to date. How, how were you doing that? How do you obtain the...
Your butters list.
Your butters list.
I'll contact either Valerie or Lisa. Valerie's been out, so...
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you use the G I S map, if that's not almost up to date, you're better off to let the assessors do it.
Then the person who let them pay the...
You're right to the registry and the assessors.
They have the latest information.
Yeah, my only question being, if you're doing the butters list, and something happens, or you, something, you missed something, or you do it wrong, are you or we liable if something gets messed up that way?
You could get by the Fedor.
If I may clarify, I'm not the one creating the butters list.
Okay, okay.
I, I get the application in, and then I contact the assessors.
Gotcha.
And the assessors will then give me a certain...
Now, they charge us twenty-five dollars.
No, they haven't yet.
They haven't.
But they're not getting their money, so they've asked her to ask us to charge, but let's just let the people, the applicant, do it on their own. Get the list, and then bring it to you.
Seven-fifty, it's gonna be seven-seventy-five for an applicant now?
That was what, no, we're not doing that. We're...
We're gonna keep that seven-fifty.
We're gonna keep it at seven-fifty. What has happened, since Nicole has taken over, she's been doing this on her own. And then all of a sudden, I'm assuming the tax assessors, they said, gee, we always got twenty-five dollars for doing this, because it would be the applicant that came in and got it. Now that you're doing it, we're not getting it, and they wanted us to charge.
So we would only be getting seven-twenty-five.
All right, let the applicant take care of that.
Well, you could tell them, like, they have to pay for the publication, and they have to pay for the registered...
And they have to have the receipt before we can hear it.
Yeah, that's what I would say, too.
And add that on to the list.
If they don't give it, then you're probably saying they contacted the butters, then.
We okay with that? Moving right along here, okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of clarification points. So I, I heard Greg recommended that we reduce it to seven-twenty-five instead of...
No, no, he asked if that's what we were doing.
Is that what they're doing?
Okay.
Is that what they want us to do?
It's gonna stay what it is.
Okay.
They, they just want...
The twenty-five dollars.
They're twenty-five dollars.
Didn't our fee used to, get one, a couple things. Our fee used to be three-fifty?
Hmm, it's gone way up.
Wait, no, no, three-fifty to seven-fifty.
Right.
Okay, that's a big step.
I know it is.
And then to add, ask another twenty-five to someone else, again, don't you think that's a lot of money to be asking for what we do?
Well, I'm here to tell you, I'm sympathetic to that, because go try and get a perk done. You created sixty dollars to dig a hole in your own property. This is, I mean, this is just the way the world we live in. We're getting seven-fifty now. They were, they were doing it before.
What I'm saying is, is we doubled our money.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand, but if it's been going on this way, this has nothing to really do with us. This is, the tax assessor's office, is, because Nicole took it upon herself for her to do it. They've been doing this, the applicants have been doing it in the past. We need to free up Nicole and just let her go back the way it was. That's all we're doing here.
I think, Greg, you're just saying that you...
We're not adding money or taking away anything.
We'll, we'll take, we'll cover the twenty-five, is basically what you're...
What I was thinking, but I don't know if that's what the board wants to do. I mean, I don't know our financial stuffs that we deal with, but I'm just saying that's a big step, real quick.
How long ago was it, three-fifty?
Two years ago.
Right when, when I first started?
Probably.
When you was like, sounded?
His father was still there.
Yeah, father, his...
My dad was on it, babe.
Peter was the one who...
He was the one who did it.
And I think the solar array is a thousand dollars, isn't it?
It needed to be.
But look, all the work that has to be done.
And I understand forty Bs are a different price, you know, because look how much time we spent on forty Bs and stuff. Not enough money for that.
All right, can we move along now?
Did we get any clarification?
No.
Keeping it seven-fifty.
Okay, we're gonna approve the July minutes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are we approving that I should change the application to read that they should go to the assessors?
You're really getting this complicated.
I just want it recorded.
Just tell them when they come in, you gotta go to the assessors and get the butters.
That's what she's saying.
Do you want it written down in the, in the application?
Could you give, could you make a motion?
I don't wanna go there.
Yeah, we'll make a motion that you state to the petition of that they go upstairs to assessors to get the butters list.
Okay, thank you.
I'll third it, too, if you need. We won't be upstairs.
Well, wherever they need to go.
Okay, we're gonna approve the minutes. I'm okay with them.